ECAT, are we ready? Awesome, thank you. Welcome to the September 9th Select Board meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast on local cable television. You can watch it live or you can watch it upon demand on ECAT. And I'm just going to ask the Select Board members to introduce themselves to ensure we have a quorum.
Jennifer Stacey.
Mark Lamb.
I'm Dottey Full Genetti.
Craig Barger.
And Select Board member Jamie Stebbins is not able to be here tonight. So the first item that we have on the agenda is the announcements. And we have Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. We have a proclamation and we've got Tracy Levine, the Director of Health and Community Services, and Veteran Services Officer Jason Snyder to come up and tell us a little bit about Suicide Prevention Month. So if you want to come up, and I'll have Craig start reading the proclamation.
Recognizing September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the town of Easton, Massachusetts, whereas the town of Easton recognizes the profound importance of mental health and the well-being of all its residents as a core element of a thriving and compassionate community. And whereas suicide continues to be a heartbreaking public health issue across Massachusetts, including our own community, affecting individuals of all ages, backgrounds, and walks of life. And whereas in Massachusetts, approximately 600 lives are lost to suicide each year, one in nine being current or former military personnel. And every life lost is a tragedy that deeply affects families, friends, and entire communities, underscoring the need for prevention and support at every level. And whereas the town of Easton stands united with national and state efforts to raise awareness, foster hope conversations, and reduce the stigma surrounding mental health challenges and suicide. And whereas organizations across Massachusetts, including the Massachusetts Coalition for Suicide Prevention and other local initiatives, continue to provide vital education, crisis intervention, and support to individuals at risk and their loved ones. And whereas it is imperative that the residents of Easton are informed of the warning signs of suicide, understand the importance of seeking help, and know the resources available, including the National Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, 988, and local counseling services. And whereas during Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, the town of Easton reaffirms its commitment to promoting mental health, supporting those in crisis, and empowering its residents to act as compassionate allies to one another. And whereas together, we can create an environment where every resident of Easton feels supported, valued, and connected, and where no one has to face their struggles alone. Now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Easton, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2024 as Suicide Prevention Month in the town of Easton and urge all citizens to take cognizance of this event and participate fiddly in its observation. Given our hand and seal, the Town of Easton, this ninth day of September 2024, Dottey Full Genetti, Mark Lamb, Jennifer Stacey, Craig Barger, and Jamie Stebbins.
Great, thank you Craig. So welcome.
Evening, how you doing? Thank you for allowing me to be here today. I just prepared a few words. Standing before you is a blessing I almost didn't get to experience, and I am deeply grateful for this moment. There was a time when I thought I wouldn't make it. Like so many of my fellow veterans, I struggle with PTSD, anxiety, depression, and survival skill. Wounds that follow you home long after the battle. I had worn a uniform with pride, ready to serve my country. But when the uniform came off, I wasn't ready for the battle, the battles that would follow. The anxiety, depression, isolation, and a sense of hopelessness crept in slowly, until they became overwhelming. I felt lost, disconnected, too proud, and ashamed to ask for help. At my lowest point, when I was convinced I couldn't take another step, that's when I picked the phone up and I called the crisis line, 988, press 1, which would connect you to the veteran's side of the suicide line. I didn't know what would come from that call. I didn't think it would change anything, but that call saved my life. On the other end of the line, there was a voice, someone who didn't know me but cared enough to listen. That person didn't judge me, didn't rush me, and didn't make me feel small for struggling. They gave me something I hadn't had in a long time, hope. They remind me that it was okay not to be okay and that I didn't have to carry the burden alone. That call connected me to resources and support that helped me see my way forward. It made me realize that there were people out there who care about us veterans, who want us to heal, and who will fight alongside us as we fight for our own survival. I stand here today, not just as someone who survived, but as someone who now believes in the power of reaching out for help. To any veteran out there who might be struggling, I want you to know that there is no shame in asking for help. The battles we fought overseas were hard, but sometimes the battles we fight within ourselves are even harder. And it's okay to admit that. If you find yourself in a dark place, please call the Veterans Crisis Line. It's there for you, just as it was there for me. That one call can make the difference between despair and hope, between feeling lost and finding a path forward. I am living proof that help is real, that hope is real, and there is a way back. You are not alone, and your story doesn't have to end here. You can reach the crisis line by calling 1-800-273-8255 and press 1, or you can dial 988 and press 1. I do come with just a couple statistics from the 2023 National Veterans Suicide Prevention Annual Report. These are the rates of suicide from 2001 to 2021. Some key findings include: The average number of veteran suicides per day is 17.2. Suicide rates among veterans have generally decreased since peaking in 2018. The highest rates of suicide were among our younger veterans, particularly those aged between 18 and 34. Efforts to prevent veteran suicide include promoting secure firearm storage, expanding crisis intervention services, and tailoring prevention services to the unique needs of veteran subpopulations. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you for sharing your personal story. It's very moving and very impactful. Sure, it's hard to talk about, and I think there'll be a lot of people that can really identify with you, certainly, and benefit. I know that myself, when my son was serving, he's out of the service now. He experienced that himself with a lot of challenges and with a lot of his friends. And sadly, a lot of people that he knew weren't able to make it. And it's a real, real shame, it's a real problem. I don't think there's enough help when you're in the service. And I'm glad to find that you were able to experience it through calling that hotline. So more people need to know about that, and more people need to see that somebody can, like you, has been successful in taking that, taking that first call and making it happen. So really, really grateful that you shared that with us.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the board have any comments?
I just want to thank you for your words. It really was heavy to listen to, and I really appreciate it. I think that another big part of this is that when we open the doors to talking about it, the stigma starts to fade and we realize that these are conversations we should be having, because people shouldn't feel like they're alone in their struggles and that there are people like them who are going through this, and that there are pathways out. But it starts the conversation sometimes, just in that right moment. So I'm really glad you're here and that you reached out for help and you're helping other people in this population. Thank you.
Thank you.
It took a lot of courage to say what you've said, and I don't know if that's the first time you've said it, or I'm sure it's not. I'm sure you've had private conversations. But what you've gone through and where you're at now, you have the ability to save lives from the position you're in and what you've been through. And that's remarkable, that's incredible. So I thank you for being so honest and open and sharing, lowering your guard, all those things that we're kind of taught not to do from a young age. You're breaking those walls down, and you're going to save lives.
Thanks, Mark.
That was incredibly moving, Jason. And I'm hoping that it does reach other veterans in our community who may not be aware of what they can reach out for, the kind of help they can get from this community. So thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
And I'm sure we'll have some of this on our social media this week and on the town's website page. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Awesome.
Appreciate it.
Tracy, did you want to come up? Did you have anything?
I did, the spotlight was on Jason today, but I just came to support him.
Thank you, that's great. Well, I do want to recognize Deputy Director Levine. And you have such a great team. I'm just really so happy, the chemistry amongst all the people in that department. You're a great leader, and I think it just says so much about you as a leader to come here to support Jason and highlight him and the work that you're doing with the community and the public is just amazing as well. So kudos to all of you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right, next we have some one-day liquor licenses. So the first one is Stone Hill College, Four Football Game Beer Gardens, 320 Washington Street, September 21st, October 5th, October 26th, November 9th, all from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m. Do you want to make a motion, Craig?
So I move to approve the Stone Hill College Four Football Game Beer Gardens, 320 Washington Street, September 21st, October 5th, October 26th, and November 9th, from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m. And here's hoping the Stone Hill football team is successful.
Second, Lamb.
So that's Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Joan, do you want to come up for the next one? The next, we have Oaks Ames Memorial Hall. There's three community concerts coming up at Oaks Ames Hall, October 25th, December 6th, and December 31st, from 6:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Joan Lundgren and Frank Alteri have requested the three one-day beer and wine licenses for Oaks Ames Memorial Hall's fall concerts. Do you want to tell us what they are?
Sure.
And introduce yourself first.
I'm sorry, Joan Lundgren, Renault Street, Easton. I work at Oaks Ames Hall. And our first concert is October 25th, which is Total Access Chicago, which is the Chicago Cover Band. December 6th, we will do a concert in conjunction with the Easton Lions Club. We did this group last year, Divas with a Twist, to great success. And then this will be our first year doing a New Year's Eve concert. And we're also doing that with the Lions. And that will be Steve Smith and the Nakedz, fabulous band. And I really want to promote all three of them. It's a great time, these are our winter concerts. They're inside, they are ticketed. But we do provide appetizers for the crowd. And it's a fun night, and it's all really good music. And Frank will be there with his beer and wine. And I urge you all to come, it's a great time. Thank you.
Well, I haven't seen Chicago Total Access, but I am going to look online. But Divas with a Twist is one of my favorites. I've known them for a long time. They are awesome. And Steve Smith and the Nakedz, he played this summer. Unbelievable, unbelievable. Big band, lots of great songs, lots of high energy. So definitely get your tickets early because they come with their own entourage of people that follow them.
They do.
So they'll probably sell out.
Hopefully, we'll sell out quickly.
How much are tickets?
It depends, depending on the concert, anywhere from $40 to $50.
How do people get access to it?
On the website, our website, oksameshall.org. We'll have a lot of social media. We sell our tickets through Ticket Taylor. And again, I urge you to get them early, they will sell out.
And it's really, it's a great price because it includes food. So appetizers, and it's usually a great spread. And you'll get caught dancing on ECAT.
Oh, boy, yes.
All right.
Unfortunately.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the three one-day beer and wine licenses for Oaks Ames Memorial Hall Fall Concerts, 3 Barrel Street, October 25th, December 6th, and December 31st, from 6:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Second.
So that's Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Did you want to, as the Vice Chair of the Cultural District, do you want to give a shout out for the September 22nd?
Oh, my goodness, yes. And I had the poster too. I got so confused on my way here, and I'm like, wasn't I already here for this liquor license? So I didn't pull it out. But December the 22nd is going to be... Did I say December?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be a little golden. September the 22nd. It's going to be absolutely fabulous. From 11:00 to 4:00, the street is closed in front of the hall. And we're going to have food trucks, we're going to have Little Lies, another great group, and 60's Thunder. We are going to have Dave Spagon. And now I'm putting myself on the spot. I should have brought the poster up with me because we have two other solo artists. And perhaps Dottey can help me.
I know.
I see her feverishly looking it up.
Andrew Su-Wing?
Yes.
And Karina, I can't think of her last name.
I can't either.
She's a high school student in Easton, she's amazing.
She's wonderful. And we're going to have food trucks, Farmer's Daughter is going to be out there. We're going to have local vendors. We're going to have some face painting for the kids. It's going to be a great day for the community. It's really going to be nice, so. Yes, that was my other hat, and I'm sorry I had to be reminded to do that. But thank you all.
Awesome, thanks Joan. All right, next we have, hold on a second. We had an appointment for the Commission on Disabilities announced on our agenda. However, Anna Lindsay is not going to be able to be appointed to the commission because she's already serving as the registrar. And you can't be on both committees if you're on the registrar. So yeah, and it's been notified. And we're still looking for somebody to serve on the Commission on Disability. So if people are looking. It's really a great, a great team, doing really great work in Easton. One of the things that I think was really impactful is for a town meeting. They worked to get listening devices and information about how people could look at closed captioning while the meetings are happening and things like that. So they really do a lot of great work. And I would encourage people, it's held on Zoom once a month. So it's not a heavy lift, and I think people will find it informative. Next, we have a department presentation from the Police Chief Keith Boone, if you'd like to come up. Good to see you tonight, Chief.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I don't have any concert information to share. It's coming down a little.
Well, you should come and bring the family.
Yeah. Well, good evening, everybody. I just thought it would be a good time to do a year-end review and where we are and where we're going as a police department. So just briefly, we just, a couple milestones we just came up on was we completed our first year of Body, Bone, Camera Program. So it's gone really well. Deputy Chief Adams oversees it. It's going extremely well. We do have some records, retention things we're working through. It's something I talked about at the budget meeting last year. It's, we can't control everything that's getting requested. But Deputy Chief Adams, our admin assistant, Leslie Buckley, is handling that. And they'll recruit me if they're running out of time when the 10-day window comes. So it's going well. Motorola's been great. Cloud storage was the best thing we could have done. It's a town decision, it was great. Another thing that we just came up with, one year out of civil service. So phenomenal. We hired two officers with experience that we never would have been able to hire just based on the civil service regulations. John Patterson and Kelly D. Natale. John came from Northeastern University, and Kelly came from North Attawaro. Multiple certifications and experience, both Easton residents, and grand slams on both of them. Another thing that happened, which all of you know, is Lieutenant Keith Noon's retired this summer. I just talked to him today. He's doing extremely well, and he's doing really well. He's a special with us right now, and just starting to work some details. But that opens up a promotional opportunity that's going to be coming up in the fall. So I'm targeting November for an assessment center to fill that lieutenant's position, which will result in a sergeant promotion at some point. So I'm working with the vendor right now on the logistics, but we're targeting the test in November and early 2025. We're hoping to make the promotion, so it's exciting. We have a young department, very energetic, and it's an exciting time right now. Summer's over, unfortunately. School's back. Chris Aker is back over at EPS on the campus, and Kristen Hicks is over at the Regional. They hit the ground running, they're doing really well. By all accounts, between staff and parents and teachers, all the faculty, they're excited to have them. I'm happy that we were able to get this going again. One thing we started to do at the end of last year that we're going to do again this year is a mentor and internship with Southeastern Regional, the Criminal Justice Program. So we'll be rotating at least three for now, high school students from the Regional to come over and do a ride along and work the desk and do some different things that we can give them some insight. If this is a field they want to go into, they can get some real-world experience. So it's working well, and the school loves it. Outreach, 988, we promoted that actually last week. So it was great to hear that the town's promoting that. We have Officer LaCount and Stephanie Kantev as our outreach team. They're doing tremendous work. They work great with Health and Community Services. Right now, I have Chris working dedicated at least, at a minimum, two days out of staffing with Stephanie. And they are straight out when I tell you that. They're down helping people at court work through problems that they had, whether it's mental health, substance abuse, domestic violence, all encompassing. And part of my one goal and objective for this year, going into this year, is to try to get him more with her and take him completely out of staffing. And I think we're going to be in a position to do that, which is something that we've worked on for many years as a town to do. So I'm excited about that. We have the open house of the Fire Department. We're helping Chief Alexander with. Little trade secret, we've convinced the two deputies to dunk the deputies. So I encourage all of you to grab a baseball and dunk Phil and John Carroll. I think they'll have some fun. So we'll be there, as many of us from the department are going to be there with our families to be part of it. It's a great event.
So you started that promotion when it was dunk the chiefs? Make sure it's dunk the deputy chiefs?
I can't take all the credit. Yeah, it started there.
That worked out well.
The alliteration made it. It had to be deputies.
It was. It started with Chief Alexander and I. Somehow, I'll give him the credit, he got us out of it. So I think we're still involved with something else, but we'll work through that this week. We've been working with the team for our Public Safety, Public Works building. Thank you to everybody in this room and the residents that supported that. It was a monumental project. So we're getting really close to getting out to bid. And you know, it could be groundbreaking in late winter, early spring, I think is what we're all hoping for. So it's an exciting time. Tricentennial, we've been working together. And we've got six events, big events that are going to kick off in January. So we've been working with Dave Clifton and Vice Chief Barger, planning, coordinating all these events, whether it's security or just being part of it. The department's really excited. Speaking of myself, I'll be at every event, I think is the goal. Fireworks, bonfire, with my family, everyone's really excited. We've never had anything like this since I've been around. So we're really excited. And we actually have some department photos we're going to do tomorrow over at Oaks Ames on steps for the yearbook they're working on. So we're going to start cataloging a lot of different things in the police department over 2025 that we'll be able to look back on and with some pride. So we're excited about that. We'll be in the budget cycle soon, so we'll be meeting, I think, a lot as capital planning and budget comes up. So I just wanted to give you a snapshot of where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. And any questions, I'll be happy to answer. But again, thank you for all the support you give me personally and the police department. It doesn't go unnoticed, and it's nice to catch up now and see you all.
That's great, thank you. Jen, you have any comments, questions?
First of all, thank you. I always really enjoy your updates. And it's just nice to hear what's going on. Couple just super quick questions. Can you remind me how long the data is stored for the body cam footage? How long does that have to be stored for?
It depends. We have, at a minimum, one year. But we follow the records retention like we would paper reports. So if it's a personal injury accident, it'd be seven years. If it was an arrest, it'd be 25 years. Anything sensitive, we have stuff for 99 years. That's the highest you can.
Okay.
And we pad the package with Motorola. So whether we save 1,000 gigabytes or 1 gigabyte, it doesn't matter. It's all part of the cloud package. So we just follow that retention schedule that we have.
Great, I'm glad the cloud solution is working out well.
Yeah. Some partners in the surrounding towns decided to buy their own servers, and they're already underwater right now.
Yeah.
So I don't know why anybody would have wanted to take that on, but the cloud storage was the best thing we could have done.
Very wise. Can you remind the public of a date for the open house?
9/28, September 20th.
9/28, awesome. And that's all for me, thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much, Chief. It sounds like a successful year with the cameras, their first year. Everything has gone well, received well. First year out of civil service has worked in our favor. That was a good decision. Do you have anything on statistics of activity or crime or anything like that that have increased or decreased this year as opposed to years before?
Well, I can't recite the numbers for you right now. We're busy. You know, as far as violent crime, we're trending in a lower direction than we were last year. I'll do my year-end reporting in December, when I'll have a better look at that. Property crimes are still high, I can tell you that, whether it's shoplifting or unfortunately, people still leave their cars unlocked. There's a lot of open door B&amp;Es and things like that. We're still plagued by domestic violence and intoxication and drivers under the influence and things like that. But when I ran my crime stats, I do them quarterly and I submit every two months to neighbors. We're on track to be, we're a little lower violent crime, but as far as calls for service, we're not going down.
Okay. Okay.
You're always busy, I know that.
Yeah.
And it seems like when I hear of things happening, they're all happening at the same time. So I don't know how we do it with such a small police force, to be honest, and that everybody's well taken care of. And I don't think people realize we have four officers on duty most of the time?
Minimum, yeah, one inside at the desk and four on the road, yeah. And that's unfortunate, that's really where we're operating almost, between training and personal time off and things like that. We're typically operating at the four officer minimum. So it comes in bunches, like you know, it's all or nothing sometimes. We have a good corps, and that's what makes it go.
Well, I think that's why it's important. I know that you value the training and exercises like that. You know, I went to something with the Mass Municipal Association when I first joined the board, and they said, of all the things that you need to support, always support the training for public safety and first responders because that's really critical to be prepared for whatever might happen. So I'm glad that you take advantage of that and the accreditation and everything. And I just love to hear that you're working with Southeastern Regional on a mentoring program. I know that you've talked about that for a long time. So to see that come to fruition is really important and to really encourage young people in this area to be in the field. I was reading today in one of the papers that people going into law enforcement, it's decreasing.
It's hard to recruit, it really is hard to recruit. And it's across the country. I've never seen anything like it. It's, I've never seen anything like it. 25 years ago, it was almost impossible to get into this job.
Right.
It was so competitive. And now it's, you know, you're really trying to do recruitment drives and try to do everything we can to find the best candidates.
Yep. Well, I can't think of any better department to act as mentors, so I'm really happy to hear that.
Thank you.
Craig?
I want to thank you and Chief Alexander and Dave Field for the cooperation that you've shown in the tricentennial. I think it was an interesting experience to have those conversations and realizing that how much it was going to take in terms of keeping people safe and making sure that the events went off very well. As I said, I have a map for you for the block party, which has now been changed. But I'm glad that we had that opportunity to chat. And I apologize that David took a long time to get there, but that's all right. We were able to resolve a lot of things. And I very much appreciate the help that I'm going to speak as a member of our Temple High Salon, because every time we have a large event, your officers are there. I enjoy every one of them, particularly the ones who were born and raised in Easton, and many of them know a lot of people in the synagogue. So it's been very, very helpful. We appreciate the support, and I appreciate the support.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Great. Well, we will see you again soon, hopefully in here and not out on the field. And thank you, and please extend our appreciation to everyone in the department.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Awesome.
Thank you, Chief.
Have a good night.
All right. We have several contracts, contract awards in front of us, so we're going to just kind of tick through these pretty quickly. So the first one is Contract Award DPW 2025-08 DJ Quirk Ford 2024 Ford Transit Van and Accessories. These were all appropriated at town meeting, so these are really just the contracts.
That's correct, Dottie. So in your packet, you have a memo and the contract from the Director of Public Works. This is for a work van and DPW replacing one that is quite far past its useful life. It was $85,000 appropriated for this. The contract came in at $49,650, so I recommend approval.
Excellent. Any questions? All right.
I move to approve DPW 2025-08 DJ Quirk Ford 2024 Transit Van and Accessories, a total amount of $49,650.
Second.
That's Bajra and Lamb. All in favor? Unanimous. Next, we have Contract Award TA 2025-01 KLA Consulting for Climate Action Plan Consulting Services.
Sure. Thank you, Dottie. I'll just give a brief overview and then punt to Jen or Sean on anything more detailed. But as the board may recall, over the summer, you were notified that we received $100,000 grant from the state to implement or to develop and implement a climate action plan for the town of Easton. Easton's been a leader in this space in a lot of regards over many, many years, but it's been done in a more ad hoc manner, whether that's joining green communities or doing certain LED conversion projects, starting to do hybridization of the fleet where we can. But we don't have a comprehensive planning document to guide our efforts, and it's certainly not a plan that straddles other areas that are worth looking into as far as having a positive impact, dealing with climate resiliency and planning for the future. And so we received that grant over the summer. The select board adopted a charge and put together CCAP, which is the Committee for Climate Action Planning. Sean is my representative on the committee. Jen is on the committee and is the chair of the committee. And their first order of business was to work with our office to put together a request for proposals, issue that, review. We had five firms respond, rank those, and bring a contract forward. And so that's what we have for you tonight. The firm that was selected as most advantageous on a qualifications-based analysis by the CCAP was Kim Lundgren Associates, KLA. The proposed scope of work is comprehensive. It's in your packet, and I recommend award. I defer to Jen and Sean on anything more detailed or smarter than that.
Yeah, sure. So all I'll say is I really want to thank the committee. This was a big undertaking. We've had several meetings leading up to this, and we had the benefit of having really strong expertise coming from different angles that helped inform what I think was a fantastic RFP output. And that led to what were good responses. And the committee has taken the process very seriously. We sat through presentations and have, you know, spent a lot of time vetting using criteria. So there was a lot of thought and a lot of deliberation. And, you know, at times we didn't all agree on pieces, but we knew we had to come to a consensus. So this was not an easy decision at all. But KLA did a fantastic job with their presentation. So, you know, huge thank you to the committee. And huge, huge thank you to Sean, because this has been a massive undertaking on his part in terms of organizing all the materials and helping, you know, just to like lead a really clear and concise process for something that's so heavy. So hats off to you, my friend. It's been a great effort.
It was a big undertaking, and it's designed by, or evaluation by committee is always tough when you have 13 folks on one committee, but I think we're all the better for it. There were dissenting opinions that led to a really good outcome, and we're really happy with KLA's proposal. They have experience in communities as large as Clark County, Nevada, where Las Vegas is, down to many municipal governments in Massachusetts. So they have really a wide range of experience. And Kim, who is the CEO of the company, the name's sake, she wrote what is believed to be one of the first, one of the first climate action plans in the state of Massachusetts. So she has a lot of experience locally, but now she's taken that experience across the country. And we're hoping that's to Easton's benefit and is tailored to our specific needs in our town. So thank you to the committee as well. They were really great to work with, and we're looking forward to working with KLA.
That's great. And thank you, Jen. So excited. I know you've been wanting to champion this for a while, so to be leading it with your expertise and really, I'm really grateful and appreciative that you've taken this on, and I can't wait to see how this comes out.
I'm just excited that we're doing this and the progress and the energy around it has been great. And I think that the process we used also has kind of set up the committee being in a good position to keep that energy going. You know, we had a lot of ideas and other things bubbling that are gonna, I think they're gonna bode well through the process. So.
I just want to make a comment. These plans, you know, they don't sit on a shelf when we invest in these, because you look at the number, you know, like $100,000 for this plan, and that's what these plans cost, because they are very comprehensive. But if we're doing all of these pieces and parts of it without a direction, you know, this helps set up future boards by getting community involvement so that you can actually move with this. Otherwise, what happens is, you know, this board comes up with a plan, and 10 years down the road, nobody's looking at it because they don't feel that they had a part in it. So having the community involvement, having the experts do it, it lays down the pathway so that you can actually do a baseline to see how are we doing now and how are we doing in the future to measure the progress. Otherwise, you're just kind of spot hitting these things and doing some good things, but there's no way to capture it and prove the value of it to people. So this is really great. And KLA is, I know Kim, she's a great asset to this project, so.
One of the things that was really impressive in their proposal was they said that their proposal or their plan would never be more than 20 pages long, because they wanted to make sure it was accessible to people and not being this long 100-page technical document that was of no use to anyone. So that was something that they were able to distill, and that's based on years of experience, to distill it down into something that's actually palatable to the average, the layperson that's reading it. So that was impressive on their part.
Awesome. All right. Would you like to make a motion, Craig?
I move to approve the contract TA 2025-01 with KL Consulting for Climate Action Plan Consulting Services in the total amount of $100,000.
Second, Stacy.
That's Bajra and Stacy. All in favor? Unanimous. Next, we have Envision Easton 2025 Master Plan. Speaking of plans, this is the update committee appointment solicitation for select board representative.
Sure. So to your point, Dottie, you know, there's, I think, sometimes occasionally cynicism around grant-funded planning processes and folks thinking that it's, you know, you just pay money and get a nice-looking report and stick it on a shelf, and that's not what we do in Easton. And this is proof positive of that. Envision Easton was a community-based, driven by stakeholder feedback master plan for the community, put together more than 10 years ago now, back in 2014. And that document laid out areas, key areas, that we would, across the administrative portions of the government and the elected boards of the government and our citizen volunteers of the government, try to focus our efforts to move Easton forward. And we've done a lot of good work. We try to tie those principles, not just to, not just within the planning department upstairs, but you'll see references to it in my own goals and objectives, which trickle down to all the departments. You'll see references to it in our budget documents, because the way that you implement plans is through operationalizing them, through capital budgets, through operating budgets. And so we received another grant to do an update on this, to bring folks on board, to check our progress. As part of this plan, there was an implementation roadmap that put time horizons and responsible parties, like any good plan would. And so we'll be doing a comprehensive kind of two-part process of assessing, have we set out, have we done all the things we've set out to do? The things that we've accomplished, great. The things that we haven't, do we need to redouble our efforts there, or has the context changed where that's no longer a priority? And then also looking at what are new emerging trends that we need to be thinking about so that we're continuing to push Easton forward despite local, regional, and national trends. And so, much like CCAP, part of that is having a committee of citizens, of representatives from our boards, who give so much of their time already to the community and who really are the experts as far as the policy implementation of Envision Easton, to come together. And we actually have an RFP out for that grant now and to guide that process. So one of the important seats on that committee is a rep from the select board, and so one of you has to put yourself forward.
And one of the other things that's important about these plans is, once you have the plans and you go for grants to tackle the action items that you have in these grants, in these plans, you go to the top of the list. If you're applying for money for a particular project and it's not part of your master plan or some other planning tool, you don't get as much favorability.
That's right. The state wants to be discerning with, and again, I think there's, it might be changing now as state budgets begin to tighten, but particularly in the three years after COVID, with kind of all the money coverage of a state. Commonwealth Massachusetts, there's some cynicism around, oh, the states are just pumping these grants out. When they're doing their job well, they look at communities and say, do you have guiding documents that lay out what your goals are and why? Who is going to implement them? Do they have a capability to implement them? Basically, are you going to, is there going to be a return on investment if we provide you with this $2 million Mass Works grant? Do you have a coherent, publicly-driven document to show why it matters to install sewers? And then do you have a record and experience to actually do it? And Easton regularly jumps to the top of the line with those, because the answer to those questions is yes here.
So does anybody want to be the select person's representative on this?
How often do they meet?
To be determined. I would imagine.
How often do they meet? That was the question, Craig.
It's to be determined, but I would imagine during the selection of a consultant, it will be your CCAP, where you had a couple of meetings per month, and then once it's moving, I would think maybe once per month, but it would be hard for me to say with certainty, because we have.
Growth men, they had said that they're anticipating at least monthly.
Okay. During the day or in the evening?
Likely to be determined once they have that first meeting. I'd assume at night, but.
Yeah, because a large majority of the membership of this committee is reps from our other boards and committees, which do typically meet at night.
Are you looking to see if his other hand's up?
Not going to look at Craig at all. So if there's nobody, I will, I'll throw my hat in the ring.
Can I second you right now?
That was quick. Oh, my gosh. Sure.
Another thing, I mean, I don't know if we can do this, if it's appropriate or not, but if, say Mark gets appointed to that and he can't make it to a meeting, can another select board member step in?
Yeah, for public meetings. So there's certainly no prohibition on that. You generally wouldn't want a full quorum of your board there, but if it's one other member attending, certainly if it's speaking to the perspective of the board on matters you've already taken as a body, that's perfectly fine. You wouldn't be able to just stand in and vote, but a committee like this is not taking tons and tons of votes. So on nights where perhaps there is a vote, maybe one selecting a consultant, it would go about it that way, you couldn't stand in and vote.
Right.
You can certainly attend and.
Because maybe that would be a good way to do it, so that you don't feel the pressure, because everybody on this committee has other jobs, they're traveling a lot, they're already on other committees. And I think, you know, I know I feel the anxiety about, like, can I really take on one more, one more, you know, committee? But, you know, it's tough because a lot of us are out every single night.
I'd do this one in a second if I didn't have climate on my plate. But it's just, it sounds like a similar kind of workload. I think my husband would freak out if I told him I had another one. But that being said, I'd be happy to attend and keep very connected to this one if you were to represent it.
Yeah.
And I would, and I would too. And if you, if you take it on and it doesn't work anymore, then we'll just come back and revisit it.
Okay. That works.
Thank you, Mark.
Awesome. Thank you, Mark. So you want to make a motion?
I move that our representative to the Easton Vision 2025 Master Plan Update Committee is Mark Lamb.
Second, Stacy.
That's Bajra and Stacy. All in favor?
No, it's roll call.
Sir, I would just ask that the clarity be added, but it's a two-year term starting now.
Two-year term, expiration September 9th, 2026.
Okay, so roll call vote.
Stacy Lamb.
Lamb, Lamb.
Fulgenetti Lamb.
Bajra Lamb.
Awesome. All right.
I think any one of us in this committee too brings a clear lens of, like, you have the economic development lens of this. Like, you know, it's such a, it's hard for us to figure out who makes the most sense here, because everybody has a different angle, but very cool.
Keep you posted.
Awesome.
All right. And then we have some resignations from the Age Friendly Advisory Committee, Marsha Nodelle and Jean Perrinelli. I just want to say, I'm on the Age Friendly Advisory Committee, and both of them have brought tremendous insight, and I want to thank them for their time dedicated to the committee. And so can we do this as a slate? So we'll accept the resignations of Marsha Nodelle and Jean Perrinelli, and I'll take a motion, a second, and then a roll call vote.
So I move to accept the resignation of Marsha Nodelle and Jean Perrinelli from the Age Friendly Advisory Committee.
Second.
So that's Lamb and Bajra.
Stacy Slate.
Lamb Slate.
Fulgenetti Slate.
Bajra Slate.
Excellent. Next, we have Discussion and Vote, Proposed Policy Number 38, Filming Policy Permit Fee and Application.
Sure. Thank you, Dottie. So we might remember that earlier this year, the board discussed over the summer a proposed policy fee schedule and application process for commercial filming requests that the town gets from time to time. I've researched communities, different communities that do have a film policy. It seems that the number continues to grow because the request and the demand grows in Massachusetts. And so I've taken those different approaches and then melded that with the board's feedback that we got in the July meeting, and drafted a policy application form and a fee schedule, which was included in your packet for review. But since then, we've gotten additional comments back from town council, which I printed up a copy for you, which is in front of you right now. The policy and application form will create a more uniform process for handling these commercial filming requests and will ensure that the appropriate town departments have the ability to comment before our permit is issued by our office. Police Fire DPW Community Program and Conservation Planning and Town Council have all reviewed and provided comments on the draft policy and application form. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Terrific. Any questions from the board?
So is the idea that if this were approved, it would live on the website, or how would the communication on the website be for?
Yeah, we have a page that's there now, but we don't have a policy to fill it with. So we just direct them to contact me. But now we'll have an actual process for people to follow. That makes it a little bit clearer. But thankfully, there were other policies from other towns that were able to give us something to start from, and we were able to adapt it to our specific community needs.
What would the repercussions be if somebody didn't follow this? If they just showed up? Because they do that. They don't know they're going to show up.
I guess it would depend on what the infraction was. If they were setting up shop on recreation property without permission, we would have to.
Because I think that's incorrect, if I'm wrong, Sean, but one of the, this is applicable for filming on, is it anywhere within Easton or is it on public property?
Public property.
Okay. So, I mean, that would be no different than the current situation, where if people set up on any of our public land without permission, we would probably send the police department to politely ask them to leave.
Gotcha. Just a hypothetical, I'll stress about.
But the fees aren't very high, so it would probably be, you know, we're sure you didn't know this, but go pull, go do the information, we'll help you with it, you know.
Yeah, this is more a situation where in the past few years, there's been a handful of much larger commercial operations that have come in, and to their credit, most have, I think, proactively reached out to us and said, hey, what's your process? And we said, it's a really good question. We probably should have one. So I guess I should clarify my earlier response. You were right, Dottie. The first thing would be to tell them there's a process here, but we haven't had some kind of major issue here. It's just a good practice to lay out a policy so that people are being treated fairly.
Well, I wonder if this will attract more filming opportunities in Easton.
I hope so.
I think the thing that I really cared a lot about was that we are not making it prohibitive for local people or creatives locally that want to use the property. So, you know, we're not going to treat them the same as we would treat a big, huge Hollywood filming production that comes here. So, awesome. All right. Craig?
So I move to approve the proposed policy number 38, Filming Policy Permit Fee and Application.
Second.
That's Bajra and Lamb. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, next. We had a possible vote for Contract Award WAT 2023-02 Dynamic Sand Blasting and Painting LLC Bay Road Water Storage Cleaning and Upgrades. Connor, do you want to give us an update on the status of this?
Thank you, Dottie. So in your packet, you have a memo and contract from Director of Public Works Dave Field recommending a ward of the Bay Road Water Storage Tank Rehabilitation Project to Dynamic Painting and Sand Blasting. This was actually bid over the summer, and we were looking to get moving on it quickly to get as much done as we can before the winter. There was a bid protest by one of the other bidders that was heard last week. There hasn't been a decision issued yet, and so I would ask that the board consider taking a contingent vote, because time is important here, and you meet only every two weeks. Rather than have an emergency meeting, perhaps a contingent vote to award the contract to Dynamic pending decision by the AGO in their favor. And if that's not how it goes, then we would have to go back to the procurement process, and we'll brief you on that at another time. But if it goes to them as the apparent low bidder, then we would like to be able to sign that and get it moving as soon as possible.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Do you have a written motion for that, Greg?
No, I don't.
Okay. So we have that, we anticipated, if we heard. Okay. So we, so we have that, that we anticipated if we heard, because we were waiting to, you know, till, up until the time of the meeting if we got the decision or not. So we had, you know, the different scenarios on what would happen. So because the AG has not made a decision yet, I'd like to make a motion to conditionally approve the contract with Dynamic Sand Blasting and Painting for the Bay Road Water Storage Cleaning and Upgrades pending the resolution of a bid protest in their favor.
Second, Bajra.
Oh, I made the motion. I've never made a motion in such a long time. Fulgenetti and Bajra, all in favor? Unanimous. Mark's looking at me like, what are you waiting for? All right. So next, we have the acceptance of the minutes of August 26, 2024.
So moved, Bajra.
Second, Lamb.
Bajra and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Approval only, not to be released, of the executive session minutes of August 26, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Bajra and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Town administrator notes.
Sure. Thank you, Dottie. I'd just like to take advantage of the early evening and remind folks that in addition to the climate planning, the master planning, the normal budget process that's going to be coming come holiday, that we also have really important work ongoing with promoting a sustainable Easton. That's the committee that was put together through an amendment to the fiscal '25 budget at town meeting in May. There's a propensity in local government that there's a lot of attention on the budget, usually only immediately leading up to town meeting, and then it dissipates quite rapidly. And so one of the goals of promoting a sustainable Easton is putting a committee together with folks from the town, from school, from educators association, as well as many of our residents, to take a look at the town's financial condition well in advance of us heading into the fiscal '26 budget. There's a lot of real kind of structural challenges facing Easton, not only Easton, but many communities around the Commonwealth, as we grapple with cumulative inflation, the expiration of federal aid, and just meeting the level of services that folks expect within the constraints of Prop 2 and 1/2 and diminishing portion of our revenue coming from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And so that committee started its work in August. Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, September 18th. Those are public meetings. Folks are welcome to go. If people don't want to go to the meeting or they want to follow along, we have a dedicated website where we post all of our materials, so all of our financials, all the kind of comparative analysis that we're looking at as a committee. All this stuff's public record. We feel very strongly folks should have access to it. And we post all of it online, and that's at easton MA US slash PACE, which is P-A-S-E. So we're going to really start getting to work, meeting quite a bit now that summer is over. And just encourage folks to follow along. So again, the next meeting is September 18th. And those agendas, we posted on the town's website like any other public board. All the materials are available for everyone at easton MA US slash PACE.
So the first meeting was five hours, which was a lot. We spent a lot of time really digging into the baseline of what is a budget, you know, how does this work? What can we do? What can we not do? Talking about everything for the brand-new people that have no idea about urban meeting law. And really, Connor did a wonderful job of being prepared, and Elizabeth with the materials that we needed in keeping it going. And true to our desire when we appointed people to the committee, there was some people that had different, varying opinions or thoughts on it. And it was really, it was really good for people to get to know each other and feel comfortable enough to be able to say what they think. We have some very new people to boards and committees that did a really great job, had some really great thoughtful comments. So I'm really excited about this committee. I think it's going to really do some great work. Sean, anything?
Just made another plug into dovetail with the Master Plan Update Committee representative recruitment, representative appointment. We're also doing a recruitment for three at-large members to that same committee for the Master Plan Update Committee. So that deadline to apply is September 20th, and information's available on our website from the homepage, but also there's a dedicated link. That's easton MA US slash NPUC, Master Plan Update Committee. So we encourage folks to apply.
Excellent. Thank you. Jen?
No updates from me.
Mark?
Nothing.
Craig? So I'm just, I knew this, but I'm looking at the town crier, just to let people know that this Friday, the 13th, at 5:00 PM at the Shovel Town Brewery, they are going to unveil the official beer of the Easton 300th Celebration. So there'll be Easton 300 merchandise for sale, a chance to sign up for volunteer opportunities. And we want to thank the Shovel Town Brewery for crafting this in honor of the town's tricentennial. So that's going to be fun. The Ames Free Library has a number of events, the cultural district, as Joan told us. There's, I'd really, first of all, as I'm glancing again just at the town crier, it is so well done. The pictures, it's really, it's such a great job. So Elizabeth, really want to thank you for this. It's, it's nice and easy to read. The graphics are beautiful. So.
Much better than when I used to do it.
Well, I wasn't going to quite say it like that, but, but it's, and it's very timely because I think before it was just very dense. There was a lot of text. And I think we all look, look for sound bites and visual bites to get, you know, get the information that we need. So it's very well designed and really great stuff in there. So I'd encourage everybody to sign up for the town crier. You can go to our website on the front page, down in the bottom left, there's a button to sign up, and you'll get these every week. So with that, that's all I had. If somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Bajra.
Second.
Bajra and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. And thank you, ECAT, for being here for us again this week.